Hey, good evening, everyone. Since the regularly scheduled meeting of the Trinidad Planning Commission for February 21st, 2024. Bear in mind that this meeting is a hybrid meeting, is held in person and also via video conference hosted on the Zoom platform. So anyone who signs into Zoom, we will try to make sure that if you have any comments or questions, just please raise your hand and we'll try to get to you as quickly as we can. First item on our agenda this evening is the roll call.
Commissioner Slade.
I'm here.
Commissioner Cole.
Present.
Commissioner Johnson.
Here.
And Commissioner Hopkins and Commissioner Hicken and her absence.
So let me just note that as, since we only have three commissioners here this evening, we just verified what the process is for decision making and we only need a majority of the quorum for any decision this evening. That means that two to one could either approve or two to one could disapprove anything we have to vote on. So I just wanted to confirm that so everyone understood the rules for this meeting's session. Okay, the next item on our agenda is approval of the minutes. We have one set of minutes for approval from January 17th. Any questions, comments, clarifications from the commissioners? I had just one real simple typo, Trevor, which is on page one of the minutes. Under public, uh, public hearing, the item one Morrison, the last sentence there, I think is just a cut and paste issue. Trinidad 2023 oh three, update the property, temporary closure of AMLT. It's covered elsewhere.
Yep.
Any other questions, comments? Any comments, questions, clarifications from the public? Hearing none, we'll move on to the next item, which is approval of the agenda of the agenda. We have two items for public hearing discussion, decision and action. First one is update of temporary closure of AMLT.
Richard, do you need a, uh, that was my approval of the minutes?
Excuse me, thank you very much.
I'm not in practice. I have 53 of these minutes suspended.
Second that. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Aye? Minutes are approved, thank you very much for the, oh yeah, guys, all needed, yes. Okay, next item, as I said, was approval of the agenda. We have actually three items, excuse me, for public hearing tonight. Trinidad AMLT closure, E-WALL, a design review, grading permit, use permit, coastal development permit for new construction, and then a review regarding the draft ADU ordinance. Changes to the agenda? Hearing none, do I hear motion for approval?
So.
Moving second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
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 Aye. Agenda is approved. Next item on our agenda is items from the floor. This is an opportunity for anyone in the, on Zoom and here in person to make comments to the commissioners on any issue that is not on the agenda this evening. We request that you hear comments to a maximum of three minutes. Do I hear any comment? Someone on?
Thank you so much. We will have the floor.
Okay, hearing none, we'll move on then to the next item, which is our agenda items. First agenda item is update on the temporary closure of the Axel Lindgren Memorial Trail and progress to date to reopen the trail. Trevor?
So this is just my monthly update on the temporary closure of the Axel Lindgren Memorial Trail, which was approved as emergency action last year due to erosion. At the base of the bluff there, the Parker Creek Trail, there were some repairs accomplished and that was reopened. The Axel Road Trail remains closed. We presented at the last meeting a repair plan for short term, light touch repairs to get the trail open. City's goal is to have that open still by the end of our weekend. The the trail it does, does soil disturbance in that area requires approval of a variety of different groups. The city has requested a meeting with the TRI management team. As of the time of writing the staff report, we hadn't heard back from the ancestral society, but we had heard back from the coastal conservancy. But we did hear from them today, so they will try and make that meeting date, which will be next week, I believe. So hopefully we can discuss and maybe we'll hear about their report regarding the trail. Regardless, that temporary closure is going to expire, both the Van Wijk and Axel Lindgren trails in March. So you will be seeing both of those. March likely staff will be requesting additional temporary closure time on both of those. Hopefully we'll have some progress, more progress to review.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from commissioners?
Uh, yeah, you said that, or I hear it, it looks like you met with Coastal Commission earlier this week.
Actually, yeah, we met with Coastal Commission yesterday primarily to talk about the Van Wijk Trail, because that was coastal, Coastal Commission itself had told the city that they want to see that open in six months. So we've been meeting regularly with them. They had an interesting update, it sounds like. They've kind of taken this issue up the chain with their staff and because of, they, they met with the ancestral society a few months ago. And there's also been correspondence from the Yorick Tribe requesting that that trail be closed because of cultural. So it seems like Coastal Commission staff may be favor of closure at this point.
Mr. Taylor, are you prepared?
Uh, Van Wijk. Um, Axel Lindgren is more complicated. I think everybody wants that open, it's part of settlement agreements, it's a historic cultural trail. So that one, I don't think anybody has any desires to have that closed long term. But Van Wijk is probably the direction we're going and with improvements to Edward Street.
For the comments?
So the short term fixes for the Axel Lindgren Trail. Those, is there any chance those would be come before the planning commission before they get sort of approved by the management team or it has to go through the management team before it comes?
Yeah, I think it, well, we, it was basically the same, what I sent them was the same thing that you guys saw last month. So just sort of the outline of what needs whether. That's what we sent them as a starting foundation.
Yeah, I guess, right, but in terms of like an actual project that we might decide to go through the.
You know, there's not necessarily one has to come before the other. Yeah, we do have to have the ancestral system, I think it's the Rancheria, it's the lineal descendants of TRI and the state and Storm Preservation Office, right, because of the approvals that we need for, for any soil disturbance down there on that trail. So we do need those approvals. Now we could potentially condition a planning commission action on getting those approvals. Ideally, we would have the management team at least a consent, you know, agree, at least a tentative agreement on that before we leave.
I just wanted to, if indeed, it was the remedies that were presented at our last meeting that got passed along. Wanted to reiterate, um, looking for some sort of creative solution at the toe of the, some sort of standalone metal staircase or something that would back minimize soil disturbances. Whether that's an avenue around policy 69 or not, I think it's something that would be best to, honestly, I think.
For the comments? I'll just ask for one clarification, Trevor, on page one of the report under update. Uh, you say the city has sent a request to the TRI management team, I completely understand that. Then the last sentence of that paragraph says the TAS have not responded to the request thus far. Uh, it's not clear to me, was that supposed to be the management team or actually TAS?
The TAS, so we have heard from, we had heard from the conservancy and the Yorick Tribe first, but not the TAS.
Thank you.
But now we've had them, so I think we're gonna.
I mean, it was immensely helpful to have some legal counsel present at the previous discussion. Do you think it would be worth inviting TAS counsel, maybe city, to alter this discussion to make sure we're not running a foul of any legal complexities as we discuss coastal solutions and things included?
Yeah, and definitely any proposal, any action we brought to you would certainly go through at least the city attorney. But yeah.
I don't want to run out of anything.
No comments, questions? Uh, any comments or questions from the public on this agenda item? Closure of the Axel Lindgren Memorial Trail. Hearing none, we'll move on to our next agenda item. Agenda item number two, E-WALL 2023 oh one.
Is that correct?
Yes, it is. Uh, design review, grading permit, use permit and a coastal development permit to construct a new two-story, three-bedroom, 3,229 square foot residence. Trevor?
Yeah, so, um, I'll just quickly go through some of the highlights in my staff reports. I won't necessarily touch on everything, but I'm certainly able to answer questions and the applicant and the applicants. So here, I'm going to provide some additional information. So this, this project is located off Langford or Williamford Road. I haven't heard back from the assessor on whether they can provide some, some insight into that. I'm gonna call it Langford for now. So, and so sort of between Langford and Scenic Drive, it's sort of wedged in between there. The property was part of the subdivision back in 2007, so there are a variety of of studies and reports that were prepared for the subdivision that informed the placement and design of the house. Those have been followed, some, some of the reports have been updated. The geologist, one of the geologists who worked on it went up to the site and provided an update. The, a botanist went out there, looked at habitat, so so there's a variety of background reports and information regarding the site. It's just kind of, the approvals are a little bit complicated, it's really just, just a new house, but it's a, it's a big lot, it's a big house, a long driveway. So, and some tree removals involved, so the use permits required as part of the tree for removal of trees over 12 inches. Grading permit because the amount of soil disturbance, an area being disturbed. Design review for the house and this will help. Those, um, the, sent out referrals for this project, comments back where the Hill Department did approve the LWTS for this, so that's good. The engineer had some comments and questions about the drainage and erosion control. The applicant did prepare a drainage plan, that's included in the packet. And that was in consultation with the city engineer's office, so we haven't been signed off on that yet, but that's been included as a condition of approval, that that will need to be engineer approval on that prior to construction. And then the typo from the Trinidad Rancheria commented that this is in their area of concern and so requested that a cultural monitor be on site during soil disturbing activities. So that has also been included as a condition of approval. Site is owned suburban residential, which is a sort of a rural residential zone, so low density, a single family housing. Is, is the primary use there, the project does meet all the height and setback of parking and all those kind of standard permitting requirements. You can see here, the house is, is fairly large, but it's, you know, 3% Florida area ratio, so it's 10% on the SR some properties. Let's see, grading, so, uh, it's not in the MS4 stormwater area, so it didn't have to include, uh, you didn't have to go through the stormwater process steps, which was disappointing because this would have actually been the first project that would have been subject to those because of its size. Um, but they are including some drainage soils anyway, so those, those are part of the requirements of that ordinance anyway. Uh, the driveway is fairly long, but it's, it's basically existing, old and native, existing contours of the site. R1 geologic report was prepared for the subdivision. All those recommendations are included as, as a conditions of approval for this project. The geologist came out, looked at the site and and played on it and said everything was consistent and, and the conditions haven't changed on the site. Um, this is in a earthquake fault hazard area, so there was a fault study done as part of the subdivision and the house is within that building site that was identified. Um, the steep slope above Scenic Drive on the south side of the property is, is mapped as being questionably stable. And so the geologist also looked at that, there will be some trees removed there, stumps will be left in place and some native landscaping, native plants should be planted there to screen the site and stabilize the soil. And then the report found that the project would not be subject to instability or causes. The septic design has been, the leach field has been designed to include a future ADU, that approval is not, you're not approving that tonight. Um, the, the future ADU, but the leach field has been sized to accommodate an ADU in the future, an ADU would require a tank, it's a tank. But the, the help, the septic system's been approved. Uh, the botanist found that there was no environmentally sensitive habitat areas on the site, so that's not an issue in terms of setbacks. The applicant is proposing to remove 19 trees for a variety of reasons, solar access, views. Trees, so those are covered in on the application. There will be some additional plantings, as I mentioned, on the slope to help screen the site. There were some comments from Coastal Commission staff and responses from the applicant, who knows, I think those have been adequately covered. And then the rest of the staff report or the use permit findings, those are, that's only related to the tree removal and then the design review for, for the structure. As usual, those findings have been written in a manner to allow approval. But if you feel differently or the public submits information that conflicts with those findings, they should be recorded accordingly. Staff recommendation is for approval, there's a sample motion for approval in there, but you do have alternatives to add, add conditions to address other concerns or continue the project to obtain information on that project if we feel that the findings warrant more than we can need. Most of the conditions of approval are fairly standard. There's one more specific to the grading ordinance and the city engineers sign off and approval. There's the all recommendations from LACO report. There, there is a permit required from the county, so part of the property is in the county jurisdiction, so they have applied for the approachment permit for the end of the driveway of the road. And, and then there's a tennis for the cultural monitor. And then I added a couple to the driveway to protect the leach field, so a curb or, or fallards to keep someone from driving off the driveway on the leach field and to make sure tree can just look. That is my report and I'm happy to answer your questions.
Okay, um, this is a little bit more complicated than just a, a simple reconstruction of a piece of property that we've seen before. So I was trying to figure out how we could break it down and maybe figure out the best way to get clarification on this. Maybe, I would suggest that, uh, first thing we do is perhaps if we have any clarifications in the staff report itself, just, just uh, that we go through that, if that's okay with you, and, um, and then uh, it probably is ideal to have the agent and the, uh, yeah, owner, property owner to maybe brief us and we'll be somewhat flexible the amount of time that we give them, because this is a little bit more complicated than what we normally see. And then, of course, the public will have a con, a opportunity to comment and we'll go back and forth a couple of times, I'm sure. If that's acceptable, then we'll proceed that way. Okay, so first item is if you have any questions for Trevor on the staff report per se.
I have eight questions for Trevor, and so I'm happy to go first or go last or take turns or whatever. And, and, uh, Mr. Johnson, sorry, Chair Johnson, as you've said, you know, this is a pretty complex application and I just hope that the sheer number of questions I've got, both for Trevor slash applicant agents aren't interpreted as, you know, that is the rather just indicative of my own night of the tape. So I just wanted to preface all of this with that. Um, so the first question I've got for you, Trevor, is your staff report, it, uh, you know, describes that there might be this ADU that may be formally proposed in the future, but some of the supplemental, supplemental materials. Make it clear that is definitely a plan of the letter from Mr. E-WALL justifying the removal of plants and it mentions, you know, that project will be proposed in a future application, which can be some sense of certainty to me. Uh, so my question is, are there any risks or pitfalls of separating these two projects? Considering them separately? I mean, building envelopes are sufficient?
No, yeah, I mean, I think, and that was part of the purpose of showing it on the site plan, to show that there is the space available within that buildable portion. If, you know, where it's proposed, it wouldn't require additional tree removal. And again, the, the leach field has been sized to accommodate it, so, um, and they'd have to come back for approval in the future, so, you know, I guess it's it would be their own problem if there were pitfalls.
Yeah, I think it would be their hamstring ourselves or they would be hamstringing all things, I just wanted to ask that question for that. All right, onto question number two. So I got a copy of the soils reports from Lindberg Geologic Consulting and the more recent updates. In the more recent updates, Mr. Lindberg writes, "This letter will also address the concerns relevant to the soils report that were raised by the planner for the city of Trinidad." So I'm going to ask, can you read all those concerns that he's referencing and are there any that don't appear in the staff reports?
I think he misunderstood and that was the Coastal Commission's letter that he was actually.
So we have all of those concerns in front of us, nevertheless.
Yes.
Okay. Excellent. I assure you, I mean no offense by this, because this is no way meant to question Mr. E-WALL's qualifications, like people don't, it seems like, yes, he doesn't act no finger trip about forestry. But, uh, are there ethical or illegal implications of allowing any applicants, not just Mr. E-WALL, to use their credentials to make assertions on their own applications in their history of the commission?
No, I mean, I think, you know, applicants who have those professional expertise and licenses should be able to save some money and do the work themselves, I think. Um, it's not an issue we run across in Trinidad a lot, but, um, well, I mean, so for the Davies project, they didn't hire an architect, they did their own drawing. You know, it's not exactly the same thing, but we have to trust that their site plan was what they were representing it to be. So, you know, it's, it's his license and qualifications putting it on the line, um, in a sense, so regardless of the professional, and we don't have any reason to not.
Yeah, like I said, I have no reason to doubt people with this qualification, but sure, I was just curious about ethical implications, so.
That's all community, so. Do have a license in good standing, it's professional, of course. There is an allegation, some sort of malfeasance on my part, the licensing is in action, with a licensing board actually would review such an allegation, okay. Regardless of whether it's an off man license in jeopardy, of course, zeros. But, uh, but no, there are consequences and there's a board that takes these.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, I would point out too, that we've had general contractors come to the planning committee objects of their own.
Sorry, again, this is, I think, my 12th, I think I just wanted to say that because I don't have a whole lot of experience here, seek some clarification there.
All right. Good question.
Thank you. Uh, onto question number four, halfway through. On packet page 21 of the staff reports, I quote one of the geological reports, "It is our professional opinion that proposed new residence septic systems, including reserve fields and driveways as proposed on the site appear to be suitably and sufficiently set back to the potentially unstable lands to ensure site stability." Continuing, "It is our opinion that the proposed site developments can be constructed as proposed without being subject to or exacerbating existing soils and or geologic hazards associated with the project location." So it's the engineer.
Yeah, well, the engineer.
Sorry, 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 it was the geologist, yes, sorry, both meaning. So they explicitly mention a lot of things, but do not explicitly mention tree removal. And so I'm wondering, just to clarify, is tree removal development in this context or is it omitted from that list purposely?
I assumed that, you know, he reviewed the plans and the plans include the tree removal, so I assume that when he says development, it's included in, but maybe the applicant has some additional information. I have a request here, could both of you speak into the microphone?
Sure.
I'm a little frantic. Um, so I, I guess I'm asking this because there's one specific sentence in the, uh, in the staff report, which is that the geologist found that there was no impacts to slope stability from tree removal. And I had a look through the geological reports that he sent me and I didn't see any mention specifically of tree removal, which makes me question whether they're including that in development or not. I think naturally I'm a bit skeptical with that claim, that removal of, uh, trees doesn't affect slope stability, you and I will that because I know enough of forestry and certainly do. So I just curious, uh, which geologist made that statement and which.
Yeah, I, I made the assumption that when he reviewed the development, he was including the tree.
Generally development in this context, sorry.
It would be part of the project, yeah, so again, he would have reviewed these plans that you're seeing, which included tree removal.
So I, to clarify this in the discussion, I had him on site.
Sure.
So I went through the draft plans that the two paragraphs included, all the site work.
Neil, Neil, excuse me, again, if you wouldn't mind coming to the microphone.
Oh, sorry.
Because we record this and we want to make sure that everybody can hear, okay?
Yes, okay, and response to the question of did the geologist have any chance to review? I showed him the plans, which include the draft report, essentially the same that you've seen there in terms of the size and the scope of the project, which included tree removal. I showed him the plans, which include the draft report, essentially the same that you've seen there in terms of the size and the scope of the project, which included tree removal. And so he was aware of that and he was outside to the I let him do what he had to do and I paid him. So I didn't try to influence him.
A related question. Okay. But, uh, the references to slope stability, do they refer specifically to that sort of southernmost margin of the property? Or does that include like the entire slope from 180?
Oh, uh, the entire soil. Um, so the way it's mapped, you know, the, the mapping that was done in 1976 isn't super accurate. Um, and so looking at it though, it appears like the intent was to follow that break in slope above scenic drive. So it's the entire slope. Much of it is unstable. Um, the upper parts are mapped as being questionably stable. And it extends up to that break in slope of scenic drive.
Again, not to, this is not a most recent update from the geologist was dated in January, as I recall. This is our stamp. This, again, not to trust anybody, are there procedural or legal issues with the site plan that did?
So the changes were primarily, um, related to the I think totally related to the addition of the visual assessment and the drainage plan. And then, um, Julia, the architect sent a entire new set to me, just together with a new date on it. I didn't see any other changes.
Would have been my assumption, but I just wanted to question there. Uh, two more questions, which I think are easier to answer. What do we do with the comments from the coastal commission? Like what's our?
Yeah, they were recommendations. Um, the project mo- most of the project area, at least for the building site is, is in the area that's appealable to the coastal commission. So if they decide they're not satisfied, they could appeal the project. They, you know, their, their letter included recommendations. It's not, it doesn't compel the city necessarily to do anything. And I think the applicant did adequately address those comments. And I haven't, and I did send them the updated information and I haven't heard anything.
Thank you. This is my what is a Orister Timberland conversion permit?
I do not know. That is a, um, that would be Cal Fire as a different agency.
Then strike the first part of the question.
Um, I don't have any questions specific to the staff report. Um, I do have some condition, excuse me, questions regarding the conditions, but I don't think quite to the conditions, you know, so maybe I'll say it later.
Okay, um, I guess, again, I'm probably in the same boat. Uh, I think I'd like to hear from the property owner and the agent. Probably will answer a lot of the questions that we have, or at least clarify some of the issues. But I did have a couple of things, Trevor, that, um, I wanted to understand, uh, this is the first time I've heard of a rancheria area of concern.
Me too. And I haven't.
Um, yeah, I, I'd like to, uh, get some clarification on that, certainly not tonight, but in the future, because this is something I have never heard of before. And, um, uh, it's something that we should be aware of, I think, so.
Yeah, and I, you know, as we've talked about before, I think we're moving in the direction of, you know. All projects will. Almost all projects.
Yeah, I just, uh, like I said, this is, I've, I understand sphere of influence, Trinidad's area of influence. But I've never heard that the rancheria hasn't booked that. So I would like to make sure I understand that. Uh, just as a heads up to the agent and property owner, I, I have some questions about these, um, fiber roles. And so when we get an opportunity to hear from you, I, I'm, I don't quite understand how permanent they are. And so uh, I'd like to understand that in, in more detail. But quickly, again, I think most of my issues will be clarified once we get into the discussion. Um, uh, one thing, um, I'll, I'll hold that off to conditions of approval as well. So, uh, any other questions that we have on the staff report?
Big investment for sure. I'm satisfied.
Okay. Um, then what, uh, like to do is, uh, give the property owner and the agent an opportunity to maybe brief us very quickly for all, for the overall project. And then, uh, there are a number of questions that at least I know and probably all of us have with respect to the drawing package that we just need clarification on. And, um, so, um, I don't want to take a lot of time, but we certainly want to give you the opportunity to, uh, clarify the project and help us understand.
Many of you already know me, but I'm Julian Berg, the architect that, um, Neil has hired to do the project and I'm a local guy born and raised here. So it's really exciting to work on something. Unity. Um, I really love working on designs and buildings that I think are appropriate for North Coast Senate. Neil and his family have been great to work with on this. It's a project he's been wanting to do a long time and a place for his family to gather. We've also been working closely with Trevor and the rest of the city staff to ensure that the project is meeting uh, that or exceeding the standards that the city is requiring. Collaborating with several local professionals, like we have all generic educated people that help do all these studies that are required, um, for both geol- onsite septic, the stormwater and drain and chemical study. Let's go ahead and go to the site plan. And I'll briefly go through this because I think you've all in one. Yeah, yeah, there you go. We're keeping the driveway entrance at the existing location. As you can see there, there's already a sort of a temporary gate and accessway. And it's, the driveway meanders back to the house site. Um, we, Neil and I did a lot of meetings out the site to figure out where it should go and determine this great spot. Um, it's from Langford and scenic when you're out there looking at it. Um, we're keeping most of the vegetation, well, all of it along Langford. That's their name. And most of it along scenic. Um, garage is tucked underneath. You can see those car triangles are. Um, we did this to work with the existing site contours and help hide the garage. It also allows the house living spaces to be higher and for better solar gain and sun active. The lower southern section, you can see a hatched area. Laser pointer. I'm going to have that in my bag from now on, I think. But that berm help, um, abuse up to the house and also from the house. It will help going or a draftfish noise from scenic. We're going to plant that with native plants and shrubs. It's going to look like it really fits in. Septic will be in sitting open grass area, which as Trevor pointed out, it is designed to accommodate both the house and the A U. One of the reasons we wanted to do that is just to be sure this would all fit in the long term. Um, Neil doesn't have any intention of building the A U and media future. Non-budget and how everything goes, but it's nice to have the option to do that and we think we can get these days. Most of the large spruce and fir trees will be maintained. Um, we are, as Trevor pointed out, we're proposing to remove trees along the south side, along scenic. The risk of falling on scenic, um, there's the threat of wildfire, which could start up scenic. It will also help S R fire departments. We're trying to design that this house is possible to net zero with a large solar array on the roof, um, lots of south facing glass and game. Trees is essential for this function well. We'll be planting the hillside below with, um, types of ocean spray, seeing this ox myrtle, the silk castle and solo. I'd be open to others to cover this as well. But the idea is as the stumps remain, they will rot away over time. But the, the roots of the native plants are going to take hold, you know, in three, four years and really stabilize that hillside. Why don't we go to erosion control plan, which is sheet A 1.3. It's a couple of so we did a pretty extensive erosion control plan. And so you can see the wider black lines for straw waddles, which are pretty typical when you're doing development these days, especially with all of our waterway fossil sites. For these raw wilds, you can find them at most three yards and they hold the soil and filter any water passing through. They probably last a couple of years before they fully disintegrate. I've seen some last actually probably three. But once again, is that they'll sit there and hold any sediment back, you know, and maintain Philly until plants would come in and, uh, stabilize soil. But you can see the blue hatched area there. We've got a couple larger swales. They're going to capture all the runoff and driveway runoff and keep it from going over the hill. I did review this several times with bacon. And we worked together on coming up with a plan that we think will work well. He hasn't officially approved it, but he gave me a verbal approval that this solution would be good. I added in an overflow because he was worried about if the swales were to fill up during a huge rain event, not a typical rain event, but a big rain event. And it would potentially go over that hillside and cause erosion. But in case it would brew a inch, uh, six inch clip pipe. Actually, I did say six inch H D P. That's a double wall frame pipe. And that will go into a rock outfall and then down onto the road. In my experience, I just don't think there's be much water. Yeah, it's just have significant swells. The other thing that we are proposing, you know, metal roofs, we could do rainwater for irrigation. Birds. Let's, I don't know if I need to go into the floor plan too much, but we already talked about the garage being tucked under in the basement. Yeah, if you want to uh, jump into two. The garage tucked in on the basement level. The main living spaces where we have the open kitchen, living dining. Or, which was important agent played this type of house. Bathroom on the first floor.
Dog washing station.
Yeah, there's a dog washing station. Right on the deck. They're not allowed in the house. Got it, right? Large south facing deck. Top floor, we have an additional bedroom for then with the bathroom. Go ahead and jump into the exterior. There's the roof plan, which you can see the solar panel layout. Showing the downspout locations. Next slide of getting into exterior views. So this is the main front view that much from the road, but, um, we have large overhead for rain protection, paraces, bump outs, step through heights, corner windows, sliding doors, exciting textures. It all helps to break up the massing of the building and contribute pleasing and well, but fine, but I'm biased, right? So the exterior finishes I'm showing on this sheet as well, which is a palette of earth tones. In the structure of the circle, natural stone elements. Also, there's a winged local rock plant here in Trinidad. It really grounds the house to the site. The plant site. Up to elements fire resistant. They're high quality. Frame stability and complement. Accents for wood. And like I said, the black standings, these metal roofing. Rainwater collection. And I think the black color will really help it blend in with the grounding. There as well. It is all rapid night sky frame. Pretty much a requirement. Building them just lighting on sheet A two.
I go through the visuals.
I have maybe one question.
I'll just say. Well, I can give the questions at the end, but why don't I give you a quick overview of the visuals? If you want to go up, it's at the beginning. We did a pretty comprehensive study, right? Yeah, there we go. Looking at different sites around Trinidad, just to be sure that the house was visible from locations. And this was one of the requirements coastal commission. They really heard that. That's true. Doing that, we found that you really can't see it. I mean, with the way the existing trees and distances are to sites. So when I scroll down, I can watch this. Because I think it's clear where locations are. Go ahead and go down to the go images for the house site. And then there's existing 80 to 100. tall conifer trees where that thing is. So you're not going to see it. And then go ahead. So you can see on the left there, there's a site, there's a large eighty foot tall there. That's really hard to see in the images, but that site is behind those trees. If you look at the
Only United Healthcare Medicare advantage plans come with a simple member card.
Hundred feet. You're probably a couple hundred feet down in elevation, right? Maybe three hundred feet. Yeah. Not so far away that so anyway, it, um, so we really don't feel this project will have any significant impact on neighbors. For also mentioned, President Herman has already been associated with county for the driveway portion, because this is a split jurisdiction. Please, we're getting um, a lot of time and energy has gone into this project and we want the sense of that. That's the part of Trinidad. So thank project. We're excited to take it to the next year comments.
Can I ask one quick question for you, so I can put him in this.
I think he should stay.
I'm not gone anymore. Well, it's just like change or could you scroll it down to just since we've got sure these images on this image number eight, and I could probably figure this out if I was smarter. Mission number eight and nine, can you tell us which parts of the house are indicated there in the red line? It's the for so.
Yeah, on image nine, and this is my best guess at this point, since the house um, that roofline there would be the, um, kitchen corner. If you look at the floor plan, your kitchen corner. And there's two shading hatching on there, the low itself and then
Cooper, kitty? You're in Cooper's down. Mama cat's in. Diamond's in.
On your iPhone, can you mute your me mute yourself, please?
Once again, when you're on scenic drive, you're down, I don't know. Ben, I'll say you're down quite a ways, so you really can't see it as you look up. Any other questions on the view set?
Your questions, clarifications, comments?
I don't have any questions. Um, I appreciate the thoroughness of this assessment of really the views, um. Obviously, that's a very sensitive topic here in town. Um, I think that the application is quite thorough. I, I leaving you stone turn.
Feels type A.
Uh, Mr. Berg, I've got nine questions for you.
Okay.
Again, before I begin with those, I would just want to, you know, reiterate those comments that it's clear that it's not only has I had gotten into all of this, but it seems to be anyway, you've had to jump through extraordinarily high number of hoops. Yes, I don't know the height of those hoops, but certainly a lot of them.
So more than your typical residence, uh, that would be my assumption.
Yeah, thanks. Okay. Uh, so again, being made, thirteen, whatever, could you walk me through the process of how you assemble a site plan? You'll see where I'm going eventually. Um, I guess my first question is like, so there's features like property boundaries and fault lines and contour lines. And I assume that those aren't hand drawn or, you know, digitally placed by you. They come from some J S somewhere, right?
It's, um, it was subdivided. Adjacent, they did a mapping, so we use that to do this to create contour layout. And then the property lines were done from a combination of county and maps and that subdivision map. Which they had to deal pretty extensive work for that subdivision, actually. For one lot. But yeah, it's, it is also interesting that you drive um, how that came about.
But in terms of this process of
Well, I've got a few follow up questions, actually. Okay.
Um, do you want, do you want more information on the design process?
In just a moment, yes, please.
Oh, okay.
So like when you're building a floor plan, for example, is there like a door template in whatever program you're using, sort of like drag it snaps into place?
Like, how do you? Well, yeah, it's a door. It's a door library part. It's three D part. I haven't developed three D because of the time that takes, so I did a more, the plans are starting. About the whole model. Sweet. If I can prove it. Well, I find that I like to start out with hand drawing because that's just my process. Makes it flow better and I can think a little there. And your computers are so accurate, you know, you can be a little more.
Well, I'm glad you asked. That's actually, uh, the crux of my question. I'm curious about this geologic trench. Whether it's placements on your plan. That is the result of mapping or whether it was sort of hand drawn by you or whether it came from a J S database? I guess my broader question is, was there any inference on your end about placements of that's um, of that line?
It was actually, it's a little in summertime, it's very clear. You can see a lighter shaded grass. And it's a little depressed. So Neil and I measured it from the top of that.
And it's exactly where it's
Yeah, I can see on the map. Yeah.
That was gonna be a question. I just wanted to ensure that you're one hundred percent certain about where that trench line is.
Right.
Because it seems like
Yeah, we've actually staked the house.
And it settles, it seems, right? So that's the concern was Neil and I have taken off.
We did an initial statement of it and then we we kept adjusting the design as, you know, as we learned more and, you know, decided to move some rooms around. Make it flow better and we're always looking at where that trench line was, make sure it would fit. So.
I mean, you can imagine why I'm curious about it, because it really does sort of constrain.
Yeah.
I could do without a potential engineering. You're hundred percent certain that that's where it is and it's planned appropriately around it, then I am satisfied with that. Um, I've got just two questions remaining for you then. Um, but benefits were achieved. Same story. Did you ever contemplate that grade?
Hmm. Benefit is partially the view and partially the not what, because of that geologic trench, we were pretty limited on our site area and they wanted to have some garden or anything. To help, you know. But I say front, but I um, and I would say those were the two main reasons. Then to add interest, I think if it was all one story in the basement, it would look too ranch like and kind of not be very interesting.
All right. And I just got one more comment about design, just to encourage you to use, um, I certainly appreciate the downward directed biting. But notice that they are non dimmable and I think that there's a lot of benefits, both sort of aesthetic.
Never seen the lighter come from beyond reach.
Well, say this, those are, so.
Inside out.
Oh, glad runs.
They're also twenty seven hundred K is the color temperature, which can be a little more, I would say, in line with these lights. Have a more yellow tone, not, I absolutely hate the blue LED lights. They make me crazy.
So I have no additional, uh, questions for the applicants here. I'm looking forward to my upcoming, um, lesson in forestry. Do you mind this?
Yeah.
Well, that was just me.
Oh, yeah. Uh, yeah, I just, uh, I'll just go through a couple of things.
Sure.
Um, um, one of the things that I was, uh, interested in is, um, I'm kind of paraphrasing here because I don't recall exactly where it was, but in, uh, page A one of the map. Uh, fault, map trace of the Trinidad fault. So I understand that there was an evaluation made to say that every, all the development was far enough away from that. And it specifically addressed the, uh, septic tank, the leach field, the proper, the building itself. And I think I know the answer to this, but I just want to make sure, um, the one thing that is looks closest to me is propane tank. And the associated lines, you know, with, with that. I, are, can you verify that that is still within the range, the allowable range to the fault?
You know, I have question if you can put a propane tank there, but it's
The fifty foot setback only applies to habit.
Yeah.
Have habitable structure. So a garage, a garage could actually be outside of that.
They're trying to keep, you know, death or injury from happening in habitable space. So propane tank slab wouldn't maybe I miss by aura garage.
Maybe I misunderstood. I thought that they also addressed the uh, leach field as well, but maybe confusing myself. That was not part of
That was probably the R one. That might've been the R one report. Did you look at? I didn't actually, I didn't send you the full report. It was a separate.
That was the full on report by Laco down in two thousand.
Yeah, I sent them the R one report, but I didn't send the fault report.
Something like thirty five or forty pages. I only printed the conclusions and recommendations of that one.
Well, if by definition it is only habitable. Then that answers my question, but I just want to make sure. Okay.
Um, that you do have to place a propane tank on a engineered slab.
Yes, of course.
Got rebarred and all that.
Right, right. Um, so, uh, on, uh, plate, uh, A one dot three. Um, there's three little skeptics here for some, um, erosion control measures. And I understand, um, we talked about the, um, fiber roll.
Mm hmm.
Uh, I didn't understand the first two though, the infiltration trench detail. I don't even know where that is.
Okay. That is wherever you see the dashed black line. Oh, 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 oh. To the screen. Basically, it's a French drain. Have you dig a trench and you place drain rock, I'm calling but three point five inch diameter clean drainage rock.
Right.
And that's placed basically in the cover so it doesn't seal up.
Right.
And that allow it, the perforated drain allows water to percolate into the ground throughout that drain system. So by the time the drain gets to your swale, there may not be much water left. So the swale is kind of a I, if you put it up on the screen, I can run over there and
Yeah, I think it's the ones labeled French drains.
Yeah, it's French drain to landscapers. I probably should have said per detail.
Oh, I see. Yeah, I couldn't find detail one. That was what it was.
Per detail.
Okay, I got it. Okay.
Now it happened.
Okay. And then the item two, the pop up emitter detail, I see that. And that's just basically as an overflow.
Basically, that's at the of your grassy drainage swales.
Okay, so there are multiple, uh,
There's two of those pop up.
Okay.
At the end of each drain system. So there's one for the lower.
I see. Okay, thank you.
I know these sheets are, there's a lot of info on each sheet. So, Steve.
Um, so I, okay, so I'm just walking through the, the drawings here. So my question is, I, I really appreciate all of the images that you've taken in various locations that I'm amazed that this coastal commission is now concerned about views like this, that they bypass some very large projects in the area. Right, um.
They had more staff.
Ah, okay. But my question is, um, there are no images from other parcels on Langford. I think I know the answer, but I'd like to hear from you.
Let's see.
If you go to the site plan, you want to pull that.
I think that was done because there was a request from the coastal commission to these sites. Yeah, that's true. I will show us the sites based on the I, 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 I understand. Oh, you're saying that they requested these specific sites?
Yeah, they didn't care about the adjacent sites. Yeah.
Cause they care about public means.
That's right.
I understand.
And incidentally, I don't think they'll see the health.
Something
No, and that's that's why I said I, I think I knew the answer, but I wanted to make certain. I think that's it. That part. Uh, yeah, um, any other questions at this point?
Uh, not Mr. Berg, that's wanting to do this.
Okay. And again, the, I, I will come back to the public so that everyone has an opportunity to, um, we're not done yet.
So I didn't have any prepared remarks. I'm happy to just talk off the cuff. And if you want to know anything about the history of the property, I've owned it for a teen year. Uh, we acquired it, uh, we had a, uh, contract a year before it was actually split, um, because it took so long to get it through, uh, the process, but, uh, um, as soon after we acquired it, my wife passed away, uh, within five months. And so I kept it until now I've retired. And so now it's my project to build the house. And, uh, so I've had a lot of time to think about what I want. In fact, without Julian, I would have brought to you a really horridious plan that you would have rejected and I would have thanked you for it later. Uh, there's a thirty foot tall building that a nice lady helped me design. I, I was referred to Julian by a Gabe in the city council office and, uh, we had a great time, uh, this uh, over several iterations, uh, the house had, it didn't look like what we started, thankfully. Really, uh, I appreciate his make it turn into what I wanted, which is something that really is obscure from the outside, uh, exposes the views from the inside, uh, and then to have the, the beautiful panoramic view and the solar gain in the lungs. It's really kind of a dream, uh, that work. And it also fits into the contour of the, of the slope. I mean, it's a, it's a bit of a sloping, uh, a lot and just sort of seems to, uh, pick the natto surroundings. I can go on and on if you like.
I've got some specific questions for you if you don't mind. Um, and like I said, I think the design is incredibly thoughtful. Everything that you've just said, I feel like that's very much true. Most impossible to see it unless you're on a boat, right?
Yeah, you can see it from the ocean, which is, that means I can too see the ocean. Wear clothes when I'm paddling around, I guess.
Okay. So, um, so my bigger concerns are with the tree.
Yeah.
Um, and the use permit for the tree. And, um, I asked Trevor for your copy of the, the, you know, justification or rationale for your removal. Um, I've got just one copy, but I can pass it along if you folks would like to see it. So I, you've, you've broken it into a, you know, sort of discrete benefits at tree removal. I wanted to, again, not like put you on the defensive and make you justify all of this, but I do have some questions about some of these things. Because really, um, you know, the, the finding or issuance of the use permit says, the proposed use at the site and intensity contemplated at the proposed location will provide a development that is necessary or desirable for and compatible with the neighborhood or as I assess whether or not, um, that finding can be met. I've got some questions about the proposed benefits of tree. Um, and I think probably the, the most straightforward of those is like, I mean, there's some, some trees here. And I think probably the most straightforward of those is like, I mean, there's some, some trees here, which pretty obviously got together, right? Tree S, that's where the porch is going to be.
There's also a diseased tree.
Exactly, right. So that's, I don't care which disease it is, but foamy's pinea, they changed the names out so much in forest school. It's a, so, so R and S got to go, combined with that. Okay. Okay. By the way, R is gone now. God took, it fell over in the wind. Which way did it go? It went, uh. Can you tell me a little bit about the mystery, the natural history of these conks, right? I'm sort of most interested in like, you know, if they're, if they're these diseases, how do they spread? I think just spores, right? They're fruiting bodies.
Yeah, so mushroom stuff I don't. Well, a foamy's pinea is also known as white speck. It's one of those common diseases. We see it, it's endemic across the north coast. Often goes in through a scar of some kind. And it's air, it's an air conk. It's situated mid bowl. Often on one con flank of the tree and this will see one treated something. Ultimately, the disease orbit affects the tree. The tree will die often from a secondary fungus.
Yeah, so are there, are these the only two trees on the property that have some sort of disease?
Well, I didn't look at the others specifically. I looked at all the ones that I had down, but superficially, they don't seem to be fine.
Question I was prepared to ask, sorry, answer to the question. Percentage of trees in that general vicinity, would you expect? If you haven't gotten out and surveyed, totally off the record, just.
No, I would say it's, uh, foamy's pinea is one of the most common diseases of Douglas fir. There are other diseases, but other species, uh, not for remor on example, sudden of death disease. It's pretty covered around the southern part of it, but not here. But I would say if there are other comments about what you might find locally, you know, you go on the log yard and see quite a bit of white speck in them.
So how readily can the disease spread? I guess is one question. I mean, is there a chance that the future man, they would spread it to?
Well, sure, they, every year they, they put spores out and every, that's an open court, a wound of some kind or what have you. And it falls off.
So it is possible that in fact, yeah. These trees remain any effects, not only other trees on the property, potentially affecting the screening that those trees offer, but also might affect neighboring trees. Is that true? You know, like the distance those spores travel doesn't matter. It's fine. I get it.
No, I, you've stumped the ban. Okay, perfect. Good. Then I have further questions.
Okay. This goes back to the question I asked Trevor. Your surgeon that removal of those trees has no effects on slope stability? Like I'm confused a bit at the logic, but the slope is clearly unstable as evidenced by the pistol biting of the trees.
Yeah.
But simultaneously, removal of those trees doesn't actually affect slope stability?
Sure.
Confused about that logic. So anyway. Do you describe the predicted effects of removal of trees on slope stability, like those are forestry expertise?
Yeah, so conifer trees of this size generally have a seven year, the root system generally has a seven year lifespan. And so over that seven year period, they'll just slowly see that root system decay. Well, that's why it's important to right away, put something back in place that will prevent same slope stability. But these are not deep seeded landslides there. This is, if you've been out there, you know, you can draw your finger in the sandal and the sheer cliffs of scenic drive. It's mostly uplifted beach sand. And so that's slowly sloughing away and sloughing down. And so you can affect the stability of that by putting something on it that will continue the. Moisture there, but it's pretty well drained. I mean, that's.
Nice thing about something that drains really well.
In fact, I dug a hole, I've been deep for the power pole, I have a permit for. And it rained five inches thereafter and there's no water in a bottom of a five foot hole. And so it drains pretty well. So I'm not worried about a deep seeded landslide moving. But what could happen, and I think the most likely windsline, take those trees old. Because they're on that steep bank and they're on sort of sandy slopes. That if those trees, they're going to get bigger and bigger, you know, bigger sail. And so it really isn't the ground stability itself. It's the fact it's unstable ground with trees that have big roots anchored in it. And those, if you've seen just scenic drive this last year, you've seen two, three trees that have already been moved. I've lived here 45 years, there's always seen a number of trees for those that I predicted in fact.
So you're predicting that these trees will look back.
Ultimately, well.
Every tree goes over.
Yes, I hope I live long enough to prove it. So yes, those trees will fall over.
So just. That was lots of. Check more terms like a forestry.
So do you? Seven years from now. Any inconsequences? These trees. No, it's, it's my objective. You see, I have a.
Also a vested interest in keeping the hillside where it exists. That's why I proposed to put revegetation immediately. And to do it also with what I know will work. I'm kind of a fan of ocean spray. I just like the way it looks. It's beautiful. And so I'd like to. Get that.
Array as best I can in that whole slide. I would also like to remove the pampas grass if I could. I didn't include that because you might put it as a condition. I did not, I'm strong, you're not by the time. Yeah, I think your question was seven years from now, what would the, I predict would happen. Uh, well, it's. Area there with native plants. And that the trees that were at risk of blowing over.
Are the, again, not knowing, not being a botanist, not being a forester, I don't really know a lot about root structures of the existing trees versus the. Bushes, shrubs, ocean spray and blueblossom. And the lots, how do their root structures compare, right? Do they, do they offer as much stability or more stability or less stability?
Well, certainly, if you're considering raindrop erosion, the sheet erosion would come from just rain, right? It's interesting to get a vegetative cover. You've essentially accomplished that, right?
And again, the erosion that I'm concerned about is what happens when the tree erupts the whole root bot out of the ground, which you can drive down, drive on the sea.
Um, now that would cause a tremendous amount of. What I think will happen is the big trees are removed, that's eliminated, and then I'll have some interwoven shrubs. That, you know, ocean spray can get two inches of diameter of one in a mature specimen. And so it's going to be more like the, the blue blossom kind of cover, you see. Across, again, across a lot of the scenic drive portion.
Want to talk about tree removal for indefinite future? Does the, so I mean, that area on the southernmost part of the property has what would appear to be the steepest slope, right? Do trees, they would appear to be N, O, P and Q sort of creeping around westward? Those all, are they also affected by slope instability, which is the saying you suspected those might all be?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
Which of, which of those are the worst offenders?
Oh, you want a grading system.
I do. Yes, very much so. Because you said they all can be removed. So I'm just curious, whether in fact, there is a hierarchy.
Well, if you look at the trees on top of the slope, they would be subject to the same kind of effect. They just, the only trees actually that wouldn't cause the sort of effect of the, of the two diseased trees, one that's fallen over and the other one that's so far up, that it would have an opportunity to create bank erosion if it blew over. All the rest of them, when the roots come over, you know, the roots, it's not entirely true, but if you look at the crown and then consider how big the root system is underneath it. You know, that's what you're dealing with in terms of the ability to disturb soil. Now, often root rods are smaller than that, but because they break, you know. You know, that could be going to tremendous impact for essentially all of them.
Suddenly it occurs to me, so all of the areas where trees will be removed will be revegetated.
Yes.
Are all of the trees. Immediately to the south of the property, the ones that we were discussing initially, that's D, F, G, H, I, J, M and N. Uh, those are all at least 30 feet in height at the moment.
Yeah. Ah, there's one that's dead. And, you know, I could have cut it, you know, the rules and cut one out. But I'm going to wait for people who are, as much as I've had the time, the chance, I'd rather have someone who's good with it, do it all.
So they are in fact, as you've inserted within striking distance of the property. I mean, they are. It would appear to be. They are even striking, but to use your term, uh, striking distance from the property.
Yeah, of the house.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah. Because they would appear to be, like the house is at least 30 feet from that break in the slope. Is that correct? So you would have to be at least 30 feet to reach the house.
Yeah, so these are, I think we said what, 100, 120 foot trees that we posed in the. Those are the trees that are essentially the, these are the ones in one of the photographs, we said that would remain on the jointed property. They're, they're essentially consistent with that coverge. Worn at the same time.
I was massively underestimating the size of those trees. Did you rattle off approximate heights of them if you don't mind?
No. I mean, I'm just guessing. I'd say 100 to 120 feet.
And that's all of them, D, F, G?
Well, no, there's some of them that are shorter, of course.
Which are those?
I don't know.
I think Julian, you have some circles are bigger than others, so it does indicate that this is. Yeah.
F is the biggest, M seems second biggest.
Yeah, I mean, I did measure them all and I had the, I don't know what to put in there, but I did measure them all. Uh, to determine that they were the smallest trees on the property. Except for the one that's diseased, but all the big, you know, like specimen trees, those all. Yeah.
Yeah, so attachment nine, page 15 of the document.
Which attachment? I'm sorry.
Attachment number nine, page 15 of the document that wrote regarding tree removal.
So this one.
Here, we'll show it to you.
So just to, just to keep, sorry, I did here, what, what appear your, just a rationale for people. We covered diseased trees, I had the just ability, still somewhat skeptical of some of those claims. Approximately proposed residents, we've established now, as of this most recent discussion, that's most of those trees are infected in certain distances. And you mentioned. Uh, that most of the strong winds accompanying the storms arrive from the south, thus magnifying the risks that the trees may fall in the opposite direction towards the north. As that one did just fall towards the post home.
Correct.
Uh, but that justification wouldn't seem to apply to those trees that are.
Due south of the house.
Let's still fall over, but yes, you're right, they would necessarily strike the house in the, in the south fall tree or north fall tree.
That's okay. I mean, I'm just, I'm trying to determine the extent to which each of your ethanol applied to each of these.
Yeah, that's right. They're all not diseased and, you know, why would they fall over? But they all don't require all the same justification.
Well, that's why. Sorry. Yep, I'm on board with that. Again, determine the overall benefits. Uh, which represents the most likely immediate hazard, trees falling atop the house or falling onto scenic drive?
You know, I don't know how to predict that. I certainly wouldn't write a report that, that put my license online that said this is going to happen fairly, one or the other. But it will represent, so yeah, probably maybe it's that they'll happen. Yeah, have you driven down some dark, have you seen the trees that are falling? I don't know. I've seen the trees, but I don't have a, I went there because the power was out. I didn't want to see why.
Yeah, so the trees do fall.
No doubt, trees fall.
Uh, so. You know, I travel a bit and sometimes I dabble in my travel progress. I've got this nifty app called. Numbers. And it's pretty cool because you can like model, for example, how lengthy the Great Pyramid Shadow will be on the Atum Valley Equinox 2020 set. Um, but it's got some more practical applications, you know, I used it straight to. An engineering firm that had proposed new engineering building on the campus would actually shade the prized greenhouse. So they had to alter their plans accordingly. And I, I plotted 100 foot posts. In the approximate location of some of these trees. I just looked at the shadow cast by those trees at different times. No doubt in the winter. You know, relatively short trees will cast pretty long shadows into that southern exposure, right?
Yeah.
But, you know, by the time the vernal equinox rolls around, it looks to me like. Tree E has a shadow on the house part of the time and only until about 9:30 AM. Now, but.
How long was shaded?
Yeah, sure. And then by the time the summer solstice rolls around, uh, tree E doesn't appear to shade the proposed residence. Uh, with the sun rising in the east northeast, the panels spend infinitely more time shaded by the proposed bedroom three on the second floor than any of the trees you're proposing to remove.
So I, I guess I'm not quite sure while we're looking at individual trees. Is there an issue here of, of the, the plan holistically?
Yeah, so right. So we've got this list of proposed benefits of tree removal that we're trying to assess. You know, there's a net benefit removal of these trees.
Yes.
And so we've, we've been given this, this list of, you know, many rational reasons. And I just wanted to work my way through them. In the case of this, this tree E and, you know, I didn't have time that a lot of the places in that vision along that bank. But at least where tree E is, you know, in the summer equinox, there's no shadow casted by that tree.
Well, again, I guess what I was saying was that we're looking at this individ, each criteria for removal, we're looking at individually. When I look at this somewhat of a more higher perspective, I would definitely say that I would want to remove tree. E for one of the other criteria, which was to improve the view. So it's difficult for me to understand why we're looking at each tree with each criteria. When in fact, I think you have to look at each, you could look at it overall and say, hey, a lot of those trees like F, G, H, I, J, M, D. And even N are, are certainly ones that he wants to remove for view, which I don't think falls into the same category as whether or not it cast a shadow.
Yeah, no, fair enough. I'm just trying to assess the overall, you know, the risks and costs and benefits and.
Okay, well, yeah, I, I don't disagree with that. I just wanted to know where you were going with this.
Because I mean, it does seem to me that some, like, let me ask you a question differently. If we deny the use permit for tree removal, we're just still building the house.
Would I?
Yeah.
That's an unfair question, really, because you're putting me in a position where I have to answer in a way that would potentially offend this panel. So thank you for, but and that's a hypothetical, it's really unfair, so.
Well, one of the trees falls within the footprint, so that.
I'd like to add something. I lived, or I was here during, was it 2005 windstorms, when we, this maybe? When we lost a lot of trees. In fact, I had worked on the house further down scenic drive and the trees came within 10 feet of the house. And we're talking massive Sitka Spurs trees. And that storm was really neat because the trees fell in all different directions. Because the winds came in and they sort of swirled. And you can't really predict what direction the trees can fall. I just wanted to add that, you know, we're. Looking at, the tree could fall down on scenic drive or it could fall towards, you know, proposed house. We really can't predict.
Well, either way, it's bad news, isn't it?
I mean, it is.
The situation, any, any way the trees fell.
Yeah, Julian, I. And again, I don't, I don't mean to seem competitive at all. Um, I certainly apologize if that's a question, I apologize for feeling for defense. But I guess my, my hypothetical question, which I did not mean to offend you with, was that, you know, you've argued that this is the minimum number of trees.
defense. Um but I guess my my hypothetical question, which I did not mean to offend you with, was that, you know, you've argued that this is the minimum number of trees.
I guess this question is maybe more appropriate for the commission than for you, which is is any reason that any trees were removed doesn't have to remove them sort of collectively grouped together, you know, I mean, maybe that doesn't make sense, but uh thought to be a reason for removing each tree, and I just want to be sure that there was in fact a reason for removing each individual tree. Right? Maybe you, maybe you like.
Well, they're all in view, or they're all hit the house. And so that.
And that fits every tree in those two.
Now, there are other reasons.
The side of beauty, uh.
Putting shade on the house or falling on on also appropriate, like, uh, public safety, you know, well, yeah, that's a very dangerous curve. For sure, and uh not to mention the requirement floating on that. Those things would be essentially a wonderful fire lighter to my roof, uh to the extent that it's metal, I'll get to understand how warm it would get with ashes on it. But I'd like to uh avoid that. I mean, there, again, there are multitude of reasons.
I wouldn't expose them all to you, but the two most prevailing are prevalent are the the safety of the the public and my house.
I mean, one of the reasons why I sort of got engaged in this, with the complex thought exercise, and I was actually prepared to ask you for like a matrix listing which reasons applied to the trees, which of course I wouldn't do now because I hear you all have them here.
Um. I think what it comes down to is that uh, you know, I think you could have just said that ocean views from my home and this could probably would have. Well, well, as I appreciate that you and your agent acknowledge the value in preventing questions from. Yes, well, Mr. Bird is um a type A, I'm a type triple A. So I've got one last question, which, again, this this one should be a
completely inoffensive question.
Okay.
Are the native, is native vegetation more fire resistant than the existing trees?
I don't know that I could argue that any uh form of vegetation that I'm aware is more or less fire resistant. Uh redwood trees are arguably so, but I've seen them burn up, so I I don't. Like, like shrubs with, you know, glossy leaves and redens and. Fifty per se, it's the, it's the arrangement of those and creating fire lighters so that on steep ground, if you have continual vegetation from where the fire ignites, and so it'll, it'll continue to burn until it reaches the right now, if someone were to throw a cigarette on on a sunny day, so they caught a fire, it would eliminate our problem in discussion. I mean, we saw that two years ago, right, with the fun? Okay, I mean, that was. Question, what again?
Probably sounded.
I just wanted to ensure that uh each tree that we're proposing to remove.
Got to care of one.
Yep, that's right.
Sorry, yeah, and and firewood. Well, it will please the commission to know that I have no further questions.
So I'm stand for other questions, send their own.
Uh, questions? I don't have any further questions. I guess I will follow up on the tree discussion, um just with a note for Chris, I mean, I'm also a licensed forester and botanist. And what Neil had outlined in terms of slope stability um regarding the trees and then with the revegetation, um is certainly something that I'm comfortable with um in terms of keeping that slope stable. Um those native shrubs, while they do have different root structures than the trees that are currently present there, um they form, they also have, they're not just super shallow rooted, they also have deep roots that go down and they're while the roots are smaller, there's more numerous of them, and it's gonna be planting them in greater densities than the trees that are present. Um so that makes me feel comfortable about that bank not slipping down on the scenic drive or something moving there. Um so I I just want to say that to maybe make you feel.
Yeah, okay, I appreciate that.
I I was just gonna add, you know, tree removal has definitely been sometimes controversial in in training at um both for and against. Um but I believe a lot of these trees are less than twelve inches, so it could be cut without a permit. Um may maybe it would have been better if we'd identified which ones actually required a permit, but I think the applicant was just trying to present this holistically. Um and you know, I, yeah, I think one thing we've recognized in the past with tree removal permits is the use permit findings don't they fit tree removal very well. Um and so I think when we update our ordinances, that we'll probably have a different set of findings for that's me, considering them are a little tough. Um but I think also the bottom line is, I don't think that there's really I mean, someone can, you know, request to remove a tree for whatever purpose. Yeah, they they want, it doesn't, the ordinance doesn't require a specific reason.
Well, again, I appreciate um, I just stepped into my due diligence and we jumped through uh many, many, who need a, what's the part that you have?
Uh, yeah, you've jumped through many, many groups thus far, and I thought that those relatively few groups wouldn't be uh too detrimental to the process, but thank you for everybody's patience and and satisfied with the responses. Thanks.
Sure.
Any last minute questions? Okay, um this is an op, I'm gonna open it up for public comment. This is an opportunity for anyone from either here in the uh here in this area or online uh through Zoom to make comments. I would appreciate it if you could keep the comments to three minutes. And we'll open it up for public comments at this point. And we would ask that if you are in the room, if you come to the microphone, we can make sure we have you on the record.
I must say, this has been an interesting uh experience. I've never done, sat in on one of these before. Uh I live across the street, Langford Road.
I'm sorry, could you state your name, please?
I'm sorry, Leslie Zondervand Droes. And I have had the property across the road for about forty-four years. Okay. Um anyway, after the place stopped being a cow pasture, I was assuming that it was going to be built on. And I was worried that there was gonna be somebody from Southern California who was gonna come up and do a McMansion and want the whole neighborhood to change according to their standards. I'm very glad that it's not one of those people. Um. So, and I'm very glad about the downward facing lights, too. My issue and the issue that my family has is a very different perspective than probably the other ones you're going to hear. And that is, we're very protective of the forest and the wildlife. That's our main concern. Um and it's not the view or anything else. So the rather unkempt view you have across the road is the way things are gonna be because we want to keep it. Um except for the the ivy, which my grandson is working on bit by bit. Um. So anyway, we're gonna be, we're focused on the wildlife. The forest behind our houses on Langford and the forest that um happens after the steep slope that uh that goes from your place over to the rancheria. That forest all has some very special wildlife in it. And one thing I want you to know is that uh Northern scenic drive is the southernmost part of mountain lion territory. And the mountain lions are always gonna be there. So what we have done is I just don't let small grandchildren out by themselves. Okay, but about every other year in April and May, I hear the mountain lion and her cubs talking to each other below my bedroom window. Okay, and I know that one of the places they run through is that cow pasture. And so I would hope that you would arrange things not to obstruct them, but also to protect your small grandchildren. Um. Let's see, the other thing is something very special wildlife that is there, I mean, is very special. And I brought it up recently. I've been constantly keeping it quiet. But because of what the rancheria is doing, I had to come public with it. But we have had spotted owl in our forest behind our houses there. And so one of our concerns would be I don't care about the view or any of the other stuff, but the spotted owls have a large, fairly large territory. And I have heard them over um at the Dobrex and in the cow pasture area, but they'd like to stay in the high trees. And so um I don't think whatever you're gonna do is gonna affect them unless you decided to start clearing the forest between your place and the Dobrex. Because I think the wildlife actually runs through that area and come comes over to my place.
Spent some time studying. Based, the biggest prey they had is that, does he put it in wood rat? They love wood rats. And I had two wood rat nests on the property.
The bark owls are like the low critters, like the wood rats. The spotted owls tend to to hunt in the camp.
Yes, and the wood rats are more oriental and often.
Oh, okay, then, great.
Okay, we can convey this later, we have something.
I just wanted to express that my concern is doing as little as possible to interfere with who's already living there.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Any public comments on uh Zoom? Okay, hearing none. We'll bring it back to the commission. Um any other final comments or questions or clarifications, or can we begin to discuss a motion?
I guess I had a couple of questions. I don't know, I guess we'll begin to discuss a motion maybe. I want to talk about the conditions a little bit.
Great.
Um. With the proposed conditions, condition number two, this is just a simple question. The two year period, is that to begin construction, to apply for a building?
Get a building permit.
Uh to complete.
That's correct, yeah.
Uh. And then my other questions were on, which you sort of explained earlier, uh conditions eight and nine. I guess when I first read those, not knowing background information, it sounded like something that might have might be addressed in with the grading permit or by the building inspector, I guess, especially number eight, I mean I think the grading per, or the grading permission would likely specify that the driveway kind of away from the septic system and the building inspector would see to that, or is that something that he would point for this?
Well, it's not, it's not like a list of requirements in the grading ordinance, so and and it didn't come up with the city engineer or the health department, but I you know, I thought that was important and so that would be a requirement for the grading plan when it comes for.
I mean, I agree that it's important and I don't want to.
You're just wondering if it's covered elsewhere?
I'm, yeah, I would like if it's really our purview to put that in place versus.
I think so. I think it's our purview and I don't know that it's covered any roads.
Okay. Thank you. And I guess I had um but and then on number nine, I guess, I would probably, obviously would not be covered, or I didn't think would be covered elsewhere, but um. My thought with adding the curb, keep vehicles from driving onto the beach field. I guess I thought that might just be the applicant's sort of responsibility to his own benefit, rather than something we needed to force his hand to do. I sort of see both sides of it.
I mean, yes, it would be in the applicant's interest, but a lot of people don't, are, might be somewhat ignorant, like maybe the house changes hands and someone's never had a leech field before and doesn't understand that driving on that's bad. Uh we have had conditions before, the health department has added that for some projects. Um I don't know, I'm not sure why they didn't require it for this one, because it seems like it would be one that they would require something like that. Um again, and I think it is the city does have an ordinance to handle gene protect septic systems, so I do think it is something that it's.
Your questions, comments? So your motion?
Uh, based on the information submitted in the application included in the staff report and public testimony in the hearing, I find that the project is consistent with the city's LCP and other applicable regulations. And I move to adopt the information, the design review and use permit and other findings in the staff report and approve the project estimated and as conditioned in this report, in the staff.
Your second?
Uh. I'll second, because I'm a producer, I can't say like that.
I could second too.
No, I'll, I'll.
Uh, I'll, I'll second. Uh any further discussion? Okay, hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. Okay, project is approved as as uh submitted here tonight. Uh, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Sometimes very long and detailed process, but uh unfortunately, we're not experts in a lot of the fields that uh others are, so I appreciate your patience and.
I I thank you for the time that you took. Regulation nine, if someone was given that, so.
Okay, thank you. Um why don't we take two minutes? Don't, don't feel like you have to leave. Don't, don't feel like you have to leave. Item number three on our agenda. The ADU ordinance discussion regarding a draft ADU ordinance, which was continued from the November fifteenth, two thousand twenty-three meeting.
So, um, I, most of my staff reported, you've already seen, starting on page three, talks about what's new updated information. Um, not much has changed in the ordinance since you last saw it. Um, there's a couple of updates and comments in the margin. I am working with the coastal commission on a definition of habitable area. The, and the coastal commission had a couple of comments. So. And so those are the additions in here. So there was on page six, um, the conditions for projects that are within, you know, near, near a bluff. Um, basically they want to add this other condition down. I am going to follow up a little bit with them on that. Cause I haven't seen it in other ordinances and they seem to keep adding stuff to Trinidad's ordinance. Trinidad should have standards that don't fight Humboldt County or Mendocino County, for example. Um, but, so this is basically saying if the sea level rises and all of a sudden your land where the ADU is on is now blowing high tide, then it's in trouble. It seems unnecessary to me, but anyway, so I'm going to follow up a little bit with them on that, that they requested that language. And then they also, we've gone back and forth a little bit on how many ADUs to allow, and do we really need to include all the state ordinance language? Because there's just not the multifamily development in Trinidad that. But they wanted us to add it because that's what the state law is. So there's this new section. Um, seventeen five four oh seven point one, and those are location standards. And so, you know, I just wanted to avoid, this ordinance is already pretty complex for Trinidad and, you know, relates to a lot of situations that are so unlikely to come up in Trinidad. But, so this is basically just from the state law. Um, saying where ADUs could be, they still have to meet septic requirements. I did talk to someone who said they just talked to the health department and they relaxed their standards for second units and septic systems. I haven't talked to the health department. Someone who was talking to someone about an ADU in Trinidad said they talked to the health department and said. I, I'm going to follow up with the health department, because that would really change how many ADUs can be permitted in Trinidad. And then the sort of final issue was the issue of STRs. And so we talked about that, as you know, at the joint meeting, um, with the STR committee and city council. And there was a lot to digest, so the city council wanted a little bit more time before weighing in. Uh, the STR committee didn't feel like they should weigh in and sort of was dissolved as, as a committee anyway. Um, and so at last week's city council meeting, they did take up that question. And so I've got, I sort of had some questions listed. Um, they did generally agree four to one that the primary unit should be allowed to be an STR. Now that is, that's not something that's restricted in the state law, but I have seen it in some coastal ordinances. So that's where that question came up. So the coastal commission may say they think the primary unit should be, should not be allowed to be an STR, but I think with our cap, I don't see why not. And then, but no to the other ones. So we're not allowing any kind of STR, whether even if it's home share resident STRs in an ADU. With a use permit or not. So. And that's, that's what the city council voted. So you can, you know, if you feel strongly, you can certainly do something different, but that's how the ordinance is currently written based on that impact from. That's all I have.
Questions, comments, clarifications from commissioners?
I'd occur, I want to say that there are currently some ADUs in town that are being rented as STRs.
That's correct, or at least some detached living spaces that, um, maybe not helpful kitchen or. So there's one that I know of first, let's see. One for sure, let's see.
But that's the one that dropped their license this year.
Oh, well, and then no, there's one, there's one on view, there's one on view, yeah. So yeah, so yeah, there's at least one. So yeah, it would probably be good to, we could add some clarifying language that says existing ADUs that are STRs can be.
So they would be grandfathered.
They would be, I think they should be grandfathered. But then they wouldn't, they also wouldn't fall under this ordinance unless, so they would be existing non-conforming. So I'd probably actually add that to one of those last sections for dealing with existing. ADUs. So section, it starts at the bottom of page fifteen um, of the ordinance. A packet with seventy, section seventeen five four one ten. So that's the regulations for existing ADUs. Um, so maybe under the non-conforming ADUs sections. Somewhere in here, I would put that AD, ADUs that are STRs at the time this ordinance goes into effect can be.
Uh, any other questions, clarifications? So I just have a couple of general questions. Uh, you know, typically what we do is we would go through this ordinance page by page. But it sounds to me like there are still several fairly significant open issues that need to be resolved before we can actually say this is ready for prime time.
Oh, yes, I would not propose, I think it's certainly ready for you if you want to go through it page by page, and I, I think we have before. I didn't necessarily propose that because I think you guys have seen this ordinance quite a few times. Um, and we have gone through page by page. But it is not ready for adoption. Um, so the next step in the process. Basically, I just want to follow up on those two things with the, with the coastal commission. Um, language for the public lands and the habitable space. And then, and then we're going to send the ordinance to HC, to HCB for review. So Department of Housing Development, um, they now have basically kind of veto power over ordinances that don't meet the state requirement. So once we get their sign off, then we can adopt it and so you will see it. I, I want it to be. I don't want to have to make a bunch of changes, um, after HCD reviews it, but we can certainly send them, if you make modifications, we could send them just those individual modifications and ask them. So, you know, if there's significant issues that, you know, we need to go over, then let's do that before we send it to HCD, but, um, you will see it again. It's not fun.
Um, what's the pleasure? I, I guess my feeling is I don't feel the need to go through page by page. I do have a couple of questions that I would like to at least get clarified tonight. So if, if we just want to kind of hit the top of the, the ADU ordinance, uh, that's fine with me too, so.
Yeah, that sounds good. I just have a few things.
Okay, well, why don't we plow right in? Hold on. Okay, well, I can start and then we can go from there. This is not necessarily in any order, but on page five of twenty, the, of pages of the D ordinance. Uh, your comment there at, um, section D, I'm sorry, section C. ADU or JADU and any associated new development shall not be permitted on a property with known archaeological resources. Uh, my experience in the past has been that most tribal, I shouldn't say most, tribal organizations do not want to reveal, review, reveal, excuse me, reveal where archaeological things are.
Yeah.
So to me, the question raised of whether or not to include it. It's unlikely that that would even, they certainly won't do a map.
No, I doubt it, no.
No way they'll do a map, so. I guess it's more of a comment than than anything, but I, um, I just don't think that that'd be anything that we can enforce, because we won't know.
Question on that one.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, and we've talked a little bit about it before and it's a tough one. It's a standard that I think the coastal commission wanted in there, but how do we? I mean, maybe staff has a map and so staff can say, okay, I know this is a sensitive area, so. That's a question. Maybe I'll ask the coastal commission if they expect a map or what they expect.
Yeah, I mean, and, and, you know, archaeological, uh, resources don't necessarily have to be indigenous resources. But at the same time, I think trying to, I, I just found that, that find that's going to be very difficult to even accomplish, so.
Yeah. I don't. And, you know, I think as I sort of admitted to you before, we're almost getting to the point where some comments I heard that they would consider all of Trinidad as.
Easy map to make then. Yeah, aside from, um, you know, the, I know that you still have to work with the coastal commission and, and, and housing organization. I don't really have any other specific comments, but I didn't want to get that into that.
I have on page, back to page sixty-two, page seven of twenty. It's, um, the very bottom, letter C. Like maybe we talked about this. Isn't that changing? So, like, is that going to get flagged by HCD saying you can't sell the ADU from the primary unit?
That is.
There's something changing there where you can like independently sell. I know you need. I don't know how that comes.
That the law did just change, okay. Coastal commission didn't flag it. They're not necessarily upon that. I think you.
That can be real problematic when it comes to septic.
This, yeah, I don't.
I don't have no idea how that's supposed to be.
Yeah, I, I mean, that seems like a you know, it's basically a default subdivision. I don't understand how that works. But, I mean, there already was SB nine. Um, and then they, I think, yeah, they just applied it to coastal zone.
Did they?
That changes so much every year. Okay, I will look at that.
Uh, okay, the next page, data twenty. I'm just responding to your comments. Uh, TP five. You're asking if we want a new meter for an ADU, if it's larger than a. Personally, I don't see, necessarily see the advantage of that. Like requiring that, it seems like it's, if that's what the homeowner wants to do, sure, if they don't, they can save a thousand dollars or whatever a PG new PG unit costs. I'm inclined to not require it.
Census on that?
I think so, it sounds like it.
Uh, I'll keep going.
Yeah, keep going.
Okay, pa, page ten of twenty, back to page sixty-five. T ten, talking about mapping all these various enclosures, if you will. But I I guess I don't feel like we need to map those. I think that's something that, um, the administrator, I guess, can just sort of identify on a case by case basis, rather than having a map with a million circles. I mean, unless that, that everyone else feels differently. I mean, I liked a map that has, that you attached to at the end. That shows some of the various enclosures. Um, or regulations, um, appeal areas and such. But some of these things. I guess they're just, it's like kind of too small to have, basically.
Yeah, I don't think we're going to get so many that I can't just look them. And I guess, you know, it could be complicated if they change the bus stop, forgot about them. There's been talk about that.
Uh, eleven of twenty, next page. TP eleven. Regarding definitions of newly constructed. I would agree with your assessment there. That it basically doesn't apply to JADUs, it just applies to, like, I like a ground construction.
Do, I guess a question, and maybe it's a question for the building inspector. I haven't seen that as a definition, so I, I think it's sort of a commonly understood, but I could see where someone can try and argue it. But I think if we all understand what it means.
So still, still, still some clarification required there.
Oh, I could say all newly constructed first or or newly converted from uninhabitable space. And I think that would clarify.
Pretty familiar, the uninhabitable space part.
Yeah.
Okay, so not to limit it, but a garage would have a specific size entryway, which may not be ADA compliant. And, you know, if you've got a stone or concrete structure, that would be somewhat problematic to comply.
Okay, so not just remodel space because the door, the entrance and exits are significant.
I mean, it can be done, but is that what we want, I guess is the question.
That was it. I think we had great clarity on that last one.
Well, you mean on the construction ADA complaint? I would, I would, we just say on new construction.
Okay, and I will see, I have a question here for if, I will ask what H C D understands that to mean.
Chris?
Be honest with you, intended to focus on the, the three questions that were presented to the council. So I check in with you folks and see whether you're sort of in agreement with those or not.
I guess in my opinion, I would disagree with the council on the second question. I think that S T R should be allowed in eighty years today. I would justify that when, secondly, have a cap. See, so if anyone's building an A D U anywhere, it's still an additional housing unit in the city. It's not an additional S T R city. I wasn't out at the meeting.
Yeah, I mean, there was, there was some concern that.
Well, while you're thinking about that, I will add, I, I have some concerns on that one. I don't disagree with you, but I think because it's in the state law that says A D U's won't be S T Rs, I think that is that would be a tough one to get by H C D. And so unless, you know, there's a real consent, strong consensus on that, I would say, let's not try.
Is that just administratively or ministerially approved A D U's or this is any?
Well, that's, that's, that could be a question, so, yes, so I think it's, yes, it's only the ministerially approved, so. I do think that you could allow an option for someone to apply for a use permit, basically an exception. You could do that.
Even given the current, or? Okay, I guess, yeah, so when I read what the city council voted on. It made it sound like that situation, but maybe I, I think I misread the way this was written, that that situation was if you built an A D U with a use permit.
Oh, and actually, I'm sorry, my, maybe it was confusing because my reference should have been.
I guess what you're, what they voted on is can you apply for a use permit to use an A D U as an S T R? But I guess what I was thinking was, can you apply for a use permit to build an A D U to be used as?
Yes, well, that's what I, you'd have, so just like, you know, the, the ministerial approvals. I, so what I, I think I should have been referencing the answer in number two as instead of number one, based on, based on the answer number. Yes. With or without a use permit. They really didn't specifically vote on. So, yeah, so the ministerial approvals only apply to, you know, up to eight hundred square feet, whatever those sizes are, heights. If you want something bigger, you can apply for a use permit to have something that exceeds those sort of that envelope that H C D has set up for these ministerial approvals. So to me, it seems like allowing it to be an S T R would be outside that envelope and that you should be able to apply for a reading of permits to have. You just don't get the ministerial approval.
I don't get the sense that that was the intent of the city council's vote.
I, I don't, I don't think so. I, I don't think so either, but I think you, I'm just telling you, I think you, I think you have that.
I see, I see, okay, okay.
That makes sense to me, and I think that that's a reasonable.
And I'm not sure, I think, you know, I think the council's answer was no, but they didn't really get into that, the nuance of it.
Yeah, that's what I'm thinking, yeah. So are we, do we have a recommendation then?
We're not, I, I just sort of fundamentally disagree with their votes to, I don't know, number one. I've sort of been schooled tonight on proposing hypotheticals, but so could theoretically build like a twenty-five foot tall, or I guess eighteen if we're negotiating the height. A D U. Additional maintenance on the property and move it. The primary, is it, like, I mean, I, I understand the benefits of A D U's, I understand the benefits of S T Rs, but I also understand that A D U's have the age character of. Do you follow that extent, I guess? Just trying to figure it out.
Well, they could, they could ministerially have a S T R that is in that that with the height, the size. Yes, moving to that.
So they can sort of like strategically. But in the primary, as an S T for additional approvals that we thought. But in general.
Actually.
That doesn't seem that much different to me than just.
I agree with that.
Yep.
The workaround, for sure.
Well, and then you always have to consider the cap.
Well, and that's, that's what I think is somewhat unique about Trinidad and, you know, and and I think, you know, the economics of it is, is sort of difficult. I'm sure it's case by case for individuals, but I think as Tristan has pointed out, that situation of being able to have an S T R could make it more affordable for someone to buy a property in Trinidad and house.
My, my response to that argument last time was that, you know, that also becomes an asset on the property that increases the potential sales price of the house and so on and so forth.
So it's not necessarily create real affordable housing necessarily.
I noticed really create additional housing units if you, and this was a comment I was going to make earlier, right? There is, there was some concern that the A D U ordinance and the S T R ordinance shouldn't stand over in there, it's right, these sort of entities, should rely on the cap that you can draft in the A D U. It's a big concern, I share, but it was a concern that was.
Yeah, that's fair, yeah.
So what do we?
I, I don't. The only one I really have a strong recommendation on is that this full-time S T R should not be allowed in an A D U without approval.
Without what?
Without approval of use. So not ministerial A D U's, they can't be S T Rs. That's the only thing I'm clear on from the state law. I think that the coastal commission at their December meeting, I can send you the link, I actually, I didn't get a chance to finish watching it. But they had a presentation and discussion on S T Rs and housing and affordability and A D U's. And the parts that I did watch, there is, yeah, I think when, when we adopted our A D U ordinance or S T R ordinance, there really wasn't studies or evidence showing one way or another how S T Rs affected property values, for example, occupancy. And I think in, in Trinidad, I mean, in there's some things that make logical sense as how they would affect Trinidad, but I also think that Trinidad's demographics, it actually should be opposite in some ways. But now they have some more studies. Now, again, these are bigger cities and not, you know, everything's, yeah. My drivers of housing prices in Trinidad are very different than in many places, and you're just, you're just not ever going to get real affordable housing. Regardless of what you do, but yeah, I think the coastal commission is probably going to want to see more limits on S T Rs and A D U's than that. It's my impression. Because we honestly.
And in that vein, I'm sort of thinking that like there's surprise, surprise, like a significant difference between like San Diego or Manhattan Beach and Trinidad. I acknowledge that, you know, building a twenty-five A D U just to say, rent a house in S T R probably doesn't fundamentally change the character of Manhattan Beach too much, but here, yes, absolutely. He also said that there's some not all was the coastal commission staff was sort of in agreement about extent which these things should be written down or not.
Yeah, and again, that was before the December meeting. They didn't necessarily give me additional guidance after this December meeting, and they suggested I watch it. But I think, I think it's really they, you know, they did recently certify the Humboldt County's A D U ordinance, and I believe I think they mentioned like Mike Wilson, he specifically said that primary unit not be allowed to be an S T R, and that ended up in the ordinance. For, as an example. But staff, but that's just one commissioner, and they went along with it, and I think Humboldt County was fine with it. I think actually Mike Wilson suggested that before it got to hearing and Humboldt County said it might be different if Trinidad pushed back and said, no, don't agree with that because, and have a reason. I think the cap is and so I don't I see, you know, both sides on, on this one. And I don't have a strong recommendation on where we're going to go.
Well, what, what then is our, what, what, what then is our action that we want to take? Do we want to make other recommendations to the city council for these three issues? Or do we want to see how coastal commission and housing authority?
Well, that's, that's what I, I think if you guys have a strong consensus here, then that's what we present to H C D and see what they say.
I'm sure that we have a strong.
I guess I could, I could just pose the question to H C D and see how they would interpret these questions.
I think asking a specific question to them probably would be the most direct way to get any
Yeah, okay.
Or gets together.
Does H C D and the coastal commission do the same thing?
Well, I think yes.
I could necessarily be in concert with what I'm aware.
Well, I think, I think H C D is going to stick to the letter of the law. Coastal Commission. Goes beyond, does their own. Yeah, I mean, the coastal act has broader applications and there, there's more more ability for interpretation in coastal act and, and regulation, so, so that's, it's not just that they they do their own thing. It's, they have more, they have a broader scope and have more leeway to interpret things. And I think this is an issue that is somewhat influx. And so we can't necessarily predict exactly what the commission's going to do. And that's where coastal commission staff was sort of like they didn't have a strong recommendation either, except to follow H C D's the, you know, the letter of that, that state law.
Any further comments?
I mean, just to, so that you folks can make informed decisions, I'll say that I know across the board on one through three. Yeah, you would have what you made.
Well, at least we could yeah, I see, I see what you're.
Take your discretion from this one.
Yeah. Well, I think the the recommendation was is to ask
I can, I can put these scenarios to H C D and see if they raise red flags for them. That's sort of the first hurdle. And, and then it would be.
And we still have to hear back from both organizations before we can really put the final seal of approval on this anyway.
At least, but I think you want to get it pretty close to what you want before we give it to them, because we don't want to make a bunch of changes after. But, but yeah, yeah, approval will come after there.
Other answered questions for us?
I, like I said, just if you have any, I will pose these scenarios to H C D and see is this acceptable, is this, you know? And just get that answer back and and that will help inform your next discussion. And so, yeah, as, as long as you don't see any red flags anywhere here already, you know, button up a couple of things with coastal commission and then send it to H C D.
Less than a comment before I ask for a public comment? All right, this is the opportunity for anyone from the public to comment on the A D U agenda item. We have no public here in town hall, but I do see some people on Zoom, so is there any public comment? Then I would ask that you identify yourself and please limit your comments to three minutes. All right, I don't see any hands raised, so I'll bring it back for any last minute questions, comments from the commissioners. All right, hearing none, and this was just for a review and as I recall, right?
Yeah.
Discussion regarding draft, right? No action needs to be taken. Okay, next item on our agenda is commissioner reports. Any of the commissioners would like to report? Any of the commissioners who would like to report?
The, um. Council was standing the short-term rental committee, which I was surveying on, and so I was. Floating around with some spare time, and if there's something, if anything, needs me to do, I might disclose them.
Now, work on the website?
Somebody better. I'll just mention that the next public meeting for the Trinidad Community Coastal Resilience Planning Project is, uh, March seventh. And, um. Yeah, March seventh, uh, six, yeah. And that is not going to be a Zoom meeting, I understand, is that correct?
I would guess it'd be a high, I would guess it'd be higher.
Okay, it's, it's interesting the way the flyer reads, it's in-person meeting. Okay.
I knew the meeting may be today, but I have. I will, I will clarify, and, uh. The, uh, the draft document is not out for public yet, it is, um. The coastal resilience action plan, and, uh. I love acronyms, and so I just realized what that acronym is, and I just, I have a lot of fun with that. I guess it should be the ocean, goes over, uh.
Staff report? You'd like to report?
Um.
Other than on the CRAP?
Um. No, you know, just, um, continuing to work on probably the same stuff I mentioned at the last meeting. I have restarted a conversation about the website, so, um, and I am sort of collecting a list of. What needs to be done, um, so Jennifer is learning how to.
Program, you know, change and add stuff on the website, and so I'm gonna start working with her and Gabe on, let's make some changes. So if anybody has any suggestions, I can start compiling those, cause it's.
I sort of assumed, oh, we'll get it live, and then we'll continue to work on it, no, no one has worked on it, and it's terrible. Um, I can't, I can't find any, um, so. So I'm working on that, um, looks like we might have a full agenda in March, cause we've got Tristan's project plus the. Um, trails.
Um, I'll just mention one thing, uh, oh, I'm sorry, anything else on staff report?
The new.
Okay, uh, any comments on future action items?
I have one that I'm somewhat reluctant to. Which is that, uh, in the. This is now, we are four experiences have a design review, we've always come across that two thousand square foot guideline. And now officially, in one hundred percent of those. Initially, it's just a guideline, that's. Rationale for it, and potential implications of it, I think deserve like real consideration, it's something that we actually have to. Support or not, as we go.
Okay.
Were you here when we were still talking about the design? Criteria?
I don't think so.
Were you, okay, I'll.
I think you're pointing at Chris, right?
Yeah, yeah, sorry, you.
Seems familiar, it's been quite a year, but.
Okay, I will, so we did sort of run through some. Design, new design criteria for the LCP update.
You're right.
Um, and ho- hopefully that will clarify, but let me send that to you, um, and see if that answers.
That's probably why I keep throwing my, I'm beating it at it worse, cause every time it comes up, I'm just like. Just we can't even ignore it, every time that appears before us.
So, well, not every time, I guess, not with the. A lighthouse. Whose project was that we did?
The Vane Pool.
The Vane Pool project.
But it was something that was mentioned, right?
I mean, that, that wasn't necessarily the key limiting factor, but that was a.
You know, there were other.
There have been some, I mean, I think, I think there have been. There have been some projects where size was an issue, and de- definitely. But I think it also, you know, you tend to get people who, um. That wasn't always the case, but I think you get more of, like, a better design. So that they can make those arguments, that was not just a two thousand square foot box. Whatever, and so I think that's been the approach, and to, you know, lower the profile so it's not affecting views, and then you look at. I think everybody pushes that twenty-five percent.
Well, let me, let me retract my suggestion that we revisit in the future, because it seems that we have recently.
But it's, it's a, you know, it's a valid, it's a valid observation, and.
And it was actually honestly kind of struck by the fact that, uh, I've noticed the type of, just, it applied to the, as well. From a situation where. Three percent square footage losses area was. Kind of in a particular situation.
And I will say, I think, I think it was. Before my time, but I think around the late nineties, even early two thousand, um. There was a planning commission who really pretty strictly held, um. Both of that two thousand square foot, so there's been somewhat different interpretations. But then, but then you also, with that one, with that, that was the era where. Just, but Jim, you probably have Jim Cuthbert's old house. At the south side of Edwards, and it's basically a two thousand square foot. Box on top of a two thousand square foot box garage, so it's a four thousand square foot box. Now, they held them to two thousand square feet, was that a good design?
Might be why I live in a nineteen hundred seventy square foot box.
Any further comments on it? Okay, I, I'll just mention one thing, and I don't know whether it really requires a future agenda item, but, uh, I do know that there's an effort. Uh, between the museum, the library, and, uh, the land trust to. Put some signage up at Saunders Park. For, um, some of the, uh, transient issues that have occurred up there. And I know they're working with, uh, the city to fund the signs and also working with Gene Bass, who's specific security. On, um, what ordinances or what regulations need to be on those signs. And I don't know what, and I, what I'm getting at is, I don't know what the size is, you know, that, uh, they should at least be aware of what some of the rules are. And would that come to us, or?
Probably not, because I've got to sort of see the, like, the size and specifics, but I think public safety and directional signs. Are normally not subject to design review, and then also if they're not intended to be visible from off-site. So I mean, it might be at the driveway entrance, but if it's something that's, you know, on the site in the parking lot, that's not gonna be designed review.
I will make them aware that maybe they should just run the design pasture, okay?
One last, one last thing that occurs to me, um, should the planning commission have sort of like. An envoy to the ongoing rancheria project? Could it be some, I guess it probably are like, government committees, it exists that sort of thing, but. I guess I have somebody who's abreast of what their intents are.
Well, let's see. Seems like some of their meetings are, have been open to the public, so like, there's a. Like a task force or something, um.
Well, there was a meeting last night.
Uh, that was a public presentation, but they have like a task force that like. Elaine Langre, and there's some other West Haven folks have attended, um. So it seems to be open to the public, and then there's been more some staff level meetings where like Eli and myself and Josh Wolfe, J H D, he was there. But I will, I will look into the task force and see if there's.
Loving it hard, this becomes an agenda, I'm just very curious whether there should be a commission who's constantly abreast of whatever is their planning, because it's gonna.
Yeah, I think, I think, um. But the way that rancheria likes to work with the city is on a government-to-government. Level, and I would think that. As I understand it now. There are only allowed to be two council members at the government-to-government meetings to prevent having to comply with Brown Act.
Well, that, that's a different two each time, too, cause if it's the same two, then it's a standing committee and they are still subject to.
I guess what I'm trying to say is that it gets complicated, and.
Well, so I, I think, I think at this point where.
Well, like I said, staff has been involved in some staff level meetings, so staff, professional staff. I don't know how much council's been involved, but like I said, there, there is also this task force that does seem to have some members of the public involved. So I will look into whether that might be an avenue.
That'd be good to have.
Yeah, there's gonna be a lot that's going on. Based on their development plan, so, um. It'd be worthwhile to just see what we need to be involved in.
Yeah, I know, um, I've been getting inquiries about. You know, like, they're doing, you know, a lot of the background reports and mapping and biological cert, you know, that kind of stuff right now, and so I've got some questions. A small part.
Well, yeah, and, and, sorry not to cut you off, um, it might be worthwhile to, um. Request or ask the city council if they want the planning commission to do a little bit more than. Normal review of the draft EIR. Which will be, well, the knob's out now. Notice of publication, preparation, excuse me.
And, but, yeah, I bet it'll be a year.
Well, yeah.
Uh, it depends on how they're fast tracking it.
Yeah, they're, they're trying for like eight months, I think.
Okay.
Okay, anything else before we adjourn? Thank you very much, everyone.